It's 6:30 PM. I'm Edith Winbimer, and I am calling this town meeting to order, or excuse me, it's not a town meeting, Board of Selectmen meeting to order. I'm joined by Steve Hall Selectman and Amanda Thompson Selectperson. All right, we have public comment. I have one that was emailed to me that I'll read unless someone else has one first. That's good. The meeting's being recorded too, just so everyone knows. All right, so I'll read the one from a resident, Amanda Lindberg, to the Board of Selectmen regarding the potential for a noise regulation ordinance. I attended September 10th Planning and Zoning Meeting, and so understand PZC Application 2412, a Texas Amendment to Remove the Noise Regulation Section from zoning, was required. I was present last night when the Commission approved the application. I hope that over the past four weeks, the Board of Selectmen would have taken steps to prepare a town ordinance establishing noise regulations to present to the voters. Last night, we finally saw the agenda for Board of Selectmen meeting with a line item for its discussion. East Granby residents feel exposed without some legally enforceable noise controls, so I urge the Selectmen to move on such an ordinance without delay. Next on the agenda is correspondence. We have one from Commission on Aging. They're offering tech with the teen. On Friday, November 1st, from 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM, the East Granby Commission on Aging and the Public Library are sponsoring a free technology workshop for seniors facilitated by East Granby high school students who will help with phone, computer, or email questions and issues. You can sign up at the library. Next on the agenda is the minutes from September 25th meeting.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from Wednesday, September 25th, as presented.
Second up. All right, all those in favor of these minutes? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Next on the agenda is old business, back off the shared services opportunities, which is somewhat table for now. We had been discussing about expanding K to 12, or making it one school potentially in the future, so we'll be talking more about that with the Board of Ed and Board of Finance at future meetings. Basically, future finance meetings. Next on the agenda is new business. We have the Tax Collector Report from September. There are no refunds. We collected a total, this is from the Tax Collector, a total of 1.65 and change million tax ensuer, and had refunds in the amount of $9,600, with a net total of 1.64 million and change. When comparing to last year, we are down by 1.64%. However, last year, delinquents were sent out in September. We're a month behind this year due to delayed building, so this should catch up. Some things which took place this month was the Assessor, excuse me, the Tax Collector sent 2021 grantless motor vehicle delinquent accounts to collections, filed UCC liens on the 2022 unpaid personal property accounts, and worked with our building official to get access to the online building permit system, so we can check for permits for people who have back taxes. I just made a motion to accept that.
I'll make a motion to accept the Tax Collector's report as presented.
Second up. All right.
All in favor?
Oh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Sorry, I looked for my... All right, next on the agenda is the police log for September. The stats for September are, there were 11 motor vehicle accidents, 18 alarms, two disturbances, one fire, 28 medicalists, two emergency committals, 11 suspicious incidents, 13 traffic stops, one untimely death, 289 patrol checks, and a total of 506 total calls of service for service. Out of the 13 traffic stops, 10 were warnings and 2 were citations. I had on the agenda 6C. I don't have an ARPA update. Basically, the same as if that's last one. This is zero. Okay.
Is that, are we basically brought that down to, because we have, what, only like six more weeks to allocate funds to that?
Right, so the balance to expend is zero, but we're looking at everyone who's received money in town and making sure that they're using it under contract by the end of the year. Yep. Okay, next on the agenda are appointments and resignations. We don't have any resignations, but we have a couple terms which are up, and quite a bit of interest for appointments. So I'll go through the term. I apologize if I didn't give you guys the... So we have two, three terms which are up. We have Jennifer Frank. Her term is up, 11-1-2024. It's a five-year full member term. David Tobin's term is up on 11-1-2024. It's also a five-year term. And Lisa Griffin's term is up, 11-1-2024, and it's a three-year term. She's an alternate. So...
Clarify inland wetlands.
Excuse me, what did I say?
This is for inland wetlands.
Oh, excuse me, inland wetlands. I didn't mention the title, I'm sorry. So this is, yes, for inland wetlands conservation committee. There's also a vacancy for a three-year term alternate member, which we didn't receive any requests for that. So for, we'll start with the full-term Jennifer's term. We did get another resident who's interested. I'll read, what I'll do is I'll read Jennifer's letter, which I popped in here. It's good to read it. Dear, you wrote Dear Jennifer, but it's okay, I knew what you meant. Oh, wait, oh no, this is from you. Hold on a second. I think that's why I confused myself. Okay, this letter is for you, I believe, and you sent an email, right? So Jennifer's email's in here. Regarding the November 1, end of my current term on East Granby Inland Wetlands Commission, I would very much look forward to continuing as the chairperson and a member of the Commission. Having been on the Commission for many years, being a Connecticut licensed civil engineer, licensed civil engineer, and with many years of commercial construction experience, I think I am well qualified to serve the town on this Commission. I have also worked hard to step into George Kamel's big shoes, conferring with Town Consultant Robin Newton, to get needed feedback on specific issues. I think Mike Damato will also confirm that I have run the meetings correctly. And I received another interested, a letter from an interested resident, from Adrian French. I, I'll read his letter. I, Adrian French, a lifelong resident of East Granby, would like to serve as a full-time member on the Inland Wetlands Commission, effective 11-1-2024. I have extensive experience in real estate and have wetlands on my own property, which I seek to preserve and conserve, preserve and conserve. I would ask that you consider me for your upcoming appointments for 2024 going forward. So the reason I have... So those two, okay, so then I'll read David's, David's letter. Wondering if I should do one member at a time, or I'll go ahead and read. Dave Tobin? Yeah. Oh, I don't have one.
So Dave Tobin is, okay, let me see, it's the Dear Jennifer letter.
Oh yeah, I have from Jennifer saying that he would like to, I didn't have a separate one saying that he would...
This one?
Oh, okay.
Oh, that's from Metha. Okay, all right, I don't have one from Tobin, I just have, okay. Metha, Dave Metha's term, I'm sorry.
Daniel Metha.
Daniel Metha. His, that's why I was confused. His term doesn't end until, well, he'd like to end his term in 2025, so we're not going to deal with that tonight, I apologize for that. You can slide that over if you want to.
Yeah, so it's like a year from now?
2020, December 2024.
You don't want to deal with that till December?
Yeah, we'll deal with that in December. Just because we don't have enough, we've only had two other interests.
We're working on finding, I mean, there are...
So then the next full member would be Dave, and I'll finish reading. I apologize, because we have so much, so we can know them.
Dave Tobin?
Yep. Dave Tobin, who has also served the Commission well for many years, this is from Jennifer, has also indicated that he would like to continue serving on the Commission. He has copied in this letter. Dave and I hope the Board of Selectmen will reappoint both of us to another term on East Granby Inland Wetlands Commission at their next meeting. And then the other interest that I received is from Colby Laviana. This is a letter from Todd Zessin, the RTC vacancy, RTC Committee, the RTC, the RTC vacancy committee has selected Colby Laviana as our representative for the regular member position on the Inland Wetlands Conservation Commission. He is accepted to be the RTC representative for the Board's consideration. So there are three openings currently, right? And an alternate?
There's two openings currently, as full members.
Three full, three full openings and an alternate.
Oh, I'm sorry, Lisa is an alternate, you're right, an alternate. So two members and two alternates. One's unfilled and one is Lisa, who's up November 1st. And then I'll have a fit with Dan Metha.
Yep. And you're right, there's a vacancy as an alternate. I do know, I do know, I spoke to Colby, Colby's an electrician, and he obviously can read blueprints and things, so he's, so that was his background, he's been an electrician for years, I think he does a lot of work in town, I'm not sure. His, as you know, his party affiliation is Republican. Adrian French's, his affiliation, he is a registered Democrat. So do we have any? Adrian's a Realtor, Colby's an electrician, I don't know, what does Dave do? I know he's been on the Commission for a long time.
Dave Tobin?
Yeah.
He's a PhD in something, but I don't think it's environmental. He's very smart, I mean, he's...
I think he has something to do with social work in Springfield, I think.
And Colby came to our meeting last week, and I gave him a package, and I told him I'll coach him on how to read site work drawings and stuff.
I would make a motion to approve Jennifer Frank and Colby Lavinia as full-time members, and Lisa Griffin as the alternate for these terms.
Should we go, should we do it all at once, or?
Well, I think I'm going to make a motion, and you can second that or not, and then we can discuss it.
So did you also nominate Adrian French?
I can only nominate two full ones and one alternate.
So I do have a letter from Lisa, too. She'd like to be reappointed.
Yeah, as alternate.
Yeah, as alternate.
Sorry.
Yeah, no, it's okay, it wasn't, yeah, I hadn't gone there quite there yet.
That's the motion I'm putting on the table.
I would, I would like to see Adrian French involved in this, I know his character.
So I don't have a second for it, so are you making a new motion?
All right, yeah, I would like to have some more discussion on this, because...
The way Robert's rules work, and we're not always the best at this, is you make a motion, and if there's not a second, then you can make a different motion, and if there's a second, then we discuss it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know, it's, yeah, it always feels backwards to me, too. I know, and sometimes it feels easier to discuss first.
All right, so let me write this down real quick for you. We have, Lisa is asking for the alternate, right?
Yep.
I just want to make sure that I'm clear on what I'm hearing here.
Yep.
I wanted to do that for you. I'm still numb from the dentist.
Jennifer, Colby, and Dave.
Colby and Dave all looking for the full-time position.
Correct, and there are two full-time positions.
So who are you nominating? Myself and Colby?
That's what I said, but it didn't get a second, so I'm looking for a new motion, I guess.
Okay, pardon me for taking so long, folks. I read these briefly earlier today, but I would like to take a few more seconds just to go through them.
And I did receive a...
I'm trying to hear.
I did receive one of the letters late, and I showed it here.
Pardon my delay, but I would like to make a motion to appoint Adrian French and Colby Laviana as the two full-time members, and Lisa Griffin as the alternate member to the Inland and Wetlands Commissions.
I'm not going to second that. I, that's too many new people on the Commission that just lost their Commissioner or their Chair.
So we are discussing...
So I would make a motion to appoint Jennifer and Adrian as the full, and Lisa as the alternate. Am I going to be okay with that?
You mean Colby?
No, I said Colby and Jennifer, and I didn't get a second, so I'm saying you and Adrian for some sake of, you know, value in having people with some experience, as well as new.
What happens if we come to an impasse?
I can second a motion. So I'd second that motion.
And we can discuss Jennifer and Adrian?
No, the one that he made, sorry, yours was, yours was after his, so that one died, so now you need to make a new motion.
I'll make a new motion to appoint Colby and Adrian to the two full-time spots, and Lisa Griffin to the alternate position.
And I would second that motion.
I mean, I think you guys know why you're taking, we just lost our wetlands...
I understand.
...Commissioner.
And I appreciate the work you've done, and I'm happy to have a conversation with you afterwards.
I think it's kind of going to be detrimental, what you're doing.
Yeah, the problem is that inland wetlands isn't something you can walk into and do right away.
I understand.
They have to do 20 hours...
I mean, these people may not pass the test. The test is...
I understand.
I mean, I'm a civil engineer in that test.
I understand.
So you're going to have unqualified people on your board.
Yeah, so...
Because of politics.
Yeah, well, and this is supposed to be a nonpartisan board, so it really shouldn't even be the Chairman of the Republican Town Committee.
Right, and I promise it's not.
Yeah, but, you know, why is the Republican Town Committee Chair sending in a letter about it? It has nothing to do with, it's not supposed to have anything to do with politics. It should be appointed by the Selectmen in a nonpartisan board.
Well, there is a minority representation on here, too.
Yeah, but it shouldn't be coming from him. If Colby wanted the position, then he should have put something forth, not the Republican Town Committee, if it's a nonpartisan board.
Right, I mean, Jennifer did put David's forth, so I mean, I don't know, we don't necessarily, we don't even need...
As the committee, as the current Chair.
I understand what you're saying.
That was before I knew their parties, and then I found that out, so I didn't know.
So Adrian is a Democrat, so I did ask. And again, I think the point is you want to keep some amount of experience on the board, so when you're putting on two new people who haven't done, I think it's what, 20 hours of training plus a test for them to do that, that's just very concerning to me. I think knowing that Daniel has that term up in December, I could see like putting one of those two on in December and leaving Jennifer on now, just because you're at least staggering that a little bit. It gives one person time to like learn that information, and then you're adding like a new person in December, so then that way it's not so much all at once. Actually, I don't know if they can start, because it would be, because really, your term is until January 1st.
It's 11-1.
It's 11-1, okay, yeah, yeah. So then it would stagger the ability for people to...
I understand, I would train all the scenarios.
So, so then do you want to explain your rationale, or put in two new people?
Not on public television, but I'll talk to Jennifer about it.
Well, I mean, I think you don't want to, because you're true to the people you want. People might not like you for it, and that's okay. I mean, if you have a good reason, then I'd love to hear it.
I think it's embarrassing for Jennifer.
Having a civil engineer...
Okay.
On your committee.
I'm not as embarrassed, I'm okay.
And then you're going to put two new people on. I disagree. I don't know, Steve, what is your rationale for doing it besides party lines?
Well, I mean, there is two parties here involved. Adrian's a Democrat. My thought process is this, I think every now and then we need to have some new blood, for one. Two, we have, I know Adrian very well, and I know he's a very intelligent person. I put...
I don't know Adrian well. I've met him like six, I've never met Dave Tobin, but I did meet, Adrian's come to my office over the last couple of years, just he has some really great ideas for the town, which I think will help, are in line with my reason for running, too. So I did get to know him, so I appreciate that.
And I think Colby is an exceptionally sharp guy as well, so I mean, it's, it's just, that's the way I see it.
I, I just don't know, I mean, I hope you guys understand the training that goes into this and the complexity of what you're looking at.
And most certainly, if for some reason they don't manage to pass the training, which I don't think will be too much of an issue, because we're talking about two intelligent folks here.
Right.
I mean, have you been to a wetlands meeting before, ever?
It's, the training is...
I checked that, I have, I have.
The training is technical, I mean, you have to understand soil and, right?
It took longer than what it was advertised as.
They said it eight hours, it took me usually 30 or 40 hours. You have six weeks to take it.
So, I mean, that's why I think at least staggering those is a better scenario than putting two new people on at once.
All right, so I'm going to ask for votes for the motion. I appreciate it. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? All right, so next on the agenda is the land sales public hearing. I'll read a memo from our town attorney. This is to give notice that at its regular meeting of October 9th, the East Granby Board of Selectmen schedules a public hearing to be held on November 13th, 2024, at the Mary Ellen Brown Senior Community Center, 7 Memorial Drive, East Granby, Connecticut, 06026. The public hearing will take place at 7:00 PM regarding a public hearing relative to the sale of the town-owned property known as 205 Turkey Hills Road. Matt Block Lot 10-50, East Granby, Connecticut, 39.01 acres, said public hearing to be held Wednesday, November 13th, at 7:00 PM in the Mary Ellen Brown Senior Community Center, 7 Memorial Drive, East Granby, Connecticut, 06026, to hear, comment, and answer questions relative to the proposed sale. A public hearing relative to the sale of the rare portion of the town-owned property known as 32 Spoonbill Road, Matt Block Lot 25-256, East Granby, Connecticut, 14,567 square feet, said public hearing to be held Wednesday, November 13th, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the Mary Ellen Brown Senior Community Center, 7 Memorial Drive, East Granby, Connecticut, 06026, to hear, comment, and answer questions relative to the proposed sale. A public hearing relative to the sale of the town-owned property known as East-South Holcomb Street, Matt Block Lot 11-21, East Granby, Connecticut, one acre, said public hearing to be held Wednesday, November 13th, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the Mary Ellen Brown Senior Community Center, 7 Memorial Drive, East Granby, Connecticut, 06026, to hear, comment, and answer questions relative to the proposed sale. I just need a motion to hold the public hearing? I don't know.
I'll make a motion to hold the public hearing.
It's right here, you have to read that. Well done.
Remove that the East Granby Board of Selectmen hold a public hearing on November 13th, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the Mary Ellen Brown Senior Community Center, located at 7 Memorial Drive, East Granby, Connecticut, to hear, comment, and answer questions relative to the sale of three town-owned parcels of land. Further moved that the East Granby Board of Selectmen hold a town meeting on November 19th, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the Mary Ellen Brown Senior Community Center, located at 7 Memorial Drive, East Granby, Connecticut, to take action on approving the sale...
I have to change the address.
No, you said November 19th.
Yes, I forgot to date this date, sorry. November 19th for the...
It says November 13th, don't it?
For the public hearing, so it's right.
Public hearing is the 13th, and the town meeting is on the 19th.
Yes, this has to be edited to the town hall, I'm so sorry, I didn't change that. Do you mind reading it again?
I will.
Sorry, no, it's okay. November 13th at 5:30, and then November 19th at 7:00 PM. Yep, town hall.
Yeah, got it.
Center Street. I apologize for that.
No worries.
I fixed all these.
One to the top. Proposed motion. Move that the East Granby Board of Selectmen hold a public hearing on November 13th, 2024, at 5:30 PM at the Town Hall, 9 Center Street, East Granby, Connecticut, to hear, comment, answer questions relative to the sale of three town-owned parcels of land. Further moved that the East Granby Board of Selectmen hold a town meeting on November 19th at 7:00 PM in the Mary Ellen Brown Senior Community Center, located at 7 Memorial Drive, East Granby, Connecticut, to take action on approving the sale of the same three town-owned parcels of land. Said parcels are known as 205 Turkey Hills Road, Matt Block Lot 10-50, East Granby, Connecticut, it's 39.01 acres. The second is 32 Spoonbill Road, Matt Block Lot 25-256, East Granby, Connecticut, 14,567 square feet. And number three, East-South Holcomb Street, Matt Block Lot 11-21, East Granby, Connecticut, one acre. Appropriate notices for the said public hearing and town meeting shall be published.
Do you wish to make a second?
Yeah, I'll make a, all right, sorry, second that. But yeah, I would like to discuss it. The Planning and Zoning Commission does need to approve these?
Yes.
And their next meeting is November 12th?
Yes, they're doing it at that meeting.
Okay, so it just, I wasn't, I mean, is it why to hold it like?
No, it's, they just have to give their opinion, and it's called an 824 report, so they'll do that, it's fine if it's the day before.
Okay, I just didn't want us to like back them up next to each other?
Yep. And they, I talked with Robin about having, she didn't think it was necessary for a special meeting.
Okay. That's fine, obviously, I have a lot of concerns about the Turkey Hills Road property, since that was the old dump, so I'm hoping for, I don't know if that would be then at the public hearing, that you'd have hopefully more information of whether, A, we can sell it, what our liability is, what, somebody could come back at the town.
Well, we're certainly selling it, releasing all of our liability, or...
I just, the, I mean, the truth of it is, even if you have someone signing like an indemnify and hold harmless clause...
No, it's going to be airtight.
...come back at the town, so if that person runs out of assets, which certainly they could...
Right.
It will come back to the town. So I guess I don't know what kind of language I would need to see in there in order to sell that, and trust that somebody else would care for that in a proper way, that we don't end up needing remediation on the property and pretty much bankrupting the town, which is, I think, what everyone's huge concern is.
Right.
So I don't know if the town attorney should be at that, if he has really good language for that, I would encourage him to come ready to speak about that, and why he thinks that would protect the town, because I think a lot of people would be very nervous about that.
Number one is protect the town on the property.
Yeah, he's, he's, will have the contracts, so I can go over how the process is going. There is, the land's for sale, it's posted on the town website. Offers for each parcel are due October 16th at 2:00 PM. Offers for each parcel are due October 16th at 2:00 PM, hand-delivered or mailed to Town Hall. Um, the offers will be opened either that afternoon or Thursday, the 17th afternoon. There's a small group of people that were on a, it's, it wasn't a committee committee, but it was a bipartisan group of people who, um, just, we just talked about it and, um, um, they're going to be, we were talking about conditions of sale and that type of thing. And, um, obviously we want the, the parcels to go to the piece, people who have the highest use for them. So we will open them together and then, um, those will be accepted, presented at public, the public hearing, and then contracts will be made with each, each, um, potential buyer. Uh, there'll be one buyer for each, but with each buyer for each respective property. And then that's what will happen at the town meeting. We would vote, the public would vote on those contracts. So the contracts will be written by the attorney. He's got, he does have one for landfill, so he's.
Does he have environmental, um, an environmental background or a litigation background? Or what is his, what kind of law does he normally practice?
He does, um, he represents a couple of different towns, but he also does litigation. So, um.
I mean, if he's a litigator, certainly I think that's good from that perspective. I, I mean, I would suggest we at least get the advice from an environmental lawyer who would know probably even better on how to protect us. So even if you're against advice.
We're, we're in the talks with it. So he does say, said he has a very good contract for a landfill.
But I think, yeah, those two, both sides of that are really important.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Why are we selling it?
Um, I think it might. Hopefully, hopefully, um, rid our town of the liability would be really nice. Um, there is a cost to hold on to it. It costs probably about, we have it tested twice a year, um, or throughout the year. It's about $10,000. We have, Public Works has to maintain it, so they mow it. Um, and just as we were talking, just, it's a big liability for our town.
It, it's a ticking time bomb, like any other landfill?
Let's hope not.
Well, you know, it, you know, it's been capped and it's dumped, then on our property, but there are, there's years and years and years and years and years of trash there. Um, and it's, you know, it's, it's one of those things that it starts, if that starts affecting wells in the area, um, you know, then that liability comes back to us. Um, and that, that would be, it would be catastrophic to the town to have.
That come back.
That come back at us. And if it.
I, I don't think selling it eliminates your liability.
Well, we're going to make sure, we're not selling it if it doesn't. So I'll put it that way.
Generally, that's how.
We're not looking, oh, to make, you know, money just because it's not, not the point.
So it does make sense if, you know, if there's some reassurances that it won't. The other one is, uh, it's just a small piece of land off of Holcomb that the town doesn't necessarily need to own. And the third one is behind the thrift store. And again, land we don't necessarily need to own. So it's just maintenance without a need. So if somebody else is willing to own it, it, you know, it doesn't make sense to be on the town.
I mean, those, those two properties, we had, um, interested residents come to us and say, can I buy this? So that's when we decided to sell them. And I did talk with, I don't know, you probably didn't hear, um, the meeting last month, although it was riveting. Um, just joking. Um, I did explain, um, um, I did explain, where am I going with it?
About the bids?
Use of, who was involved in the use of?
Um, no. Nope. Lost my train of thought. Um, but yeah, there was, there was, um, interested parties for those two pieces of property. Oh, I know what I was going to say. I did check with, um, Public Works. Um, our director's been in the, working for the town for over 35 years. And, um, another, a couple other in, a town hall employees who've been here and just asked them. And they had about a month to think about any other properties that we would want to sell and have no use for. And they really just couldn't come, come up with any because we just wanted to do them all at once. So that's where we came up with the timing and trying to figure it all out. It's a big process. So, complicated process, but. So I'll just need, um, all those in favor of the public hearing? Yeah? Aye. Okay, we will have a public hearing on November 13th at 5:30 PM, right before our Board of Selectmen meeting, right here in this room. Okay, next on the agenda is, um, Fire Department Apparatus Committee we're looking to form. We've had a fire study committee, um, happening for the last over two years. We had a fire study done three years ago and, um, it came with a really thick book of, um, of projects. So we have been meeting weekly since then and, um, we're kind of at the point, we're working, almost have narrowed, um, down a memoir, a memorandum of agreement between the town and the fire department. The town's never had a contract with the fire, the volunteer fire department before. So we're trying to just get every, everyone's purposes put into this MOA, um, to have something to pass on to future, um, office holders. And just so that the town knows really what the relationship is. So we've ne, we've done a lot of good things in that committee and now, um, the fire department's talking about potentially new apparatus in four or five years and felt it was important to, um, develop a committee. So we're actually looking for members who'd like to join. Members from the fire study, study will still be on it. And we'd really like two Board of Finance members to be on it because I think it's really important. People don't, um, just pay cash or put however millions of dollars in capital for it. But there's, um, there's lease programs, there's all types of different financing options that we just wanted the Board of Finance members involved with, so.
And they're not light purchases. Um, you know, I know that one was recently purchased up in field and it was, I think, $2.6 million. Um, and there's a 10 different types of fire trucks to buy. There's all kinds of options and all kinds of things to do. So it's, it's a moving target when it comes to pricing, but regardless of what you get for a fire apparatus, a new one is no cheap purchase. It is something that is, uh, very expensive and, uh, I'm very glad that they're planning out at least, at least they're starting at the four-year mark, um, to see about trying to find alternate funding and things like that. So it's just not out of CIP. That's, uh, that's a responsible move.
Agreed. So if anyone out there wants to be on this committee, great. And we'll, um, I'll bring it up at the Board of Finance meeting in November. Okay, next on the agenda is noise ordinance discussion. So, um, I have a memo from, from Robin, who is our Director of Plan, Planning, and Economic Development. The planning, I'll read it to you. The Planning and Zoning Commission will be holding a public hearing to remove the noise control section of the zoning regulations at its October meeting. This change, which should have been previously addressed, was prompted due to an appellate, appellate, thank you, court case, um, Berlin Batting Cages versus Zoning Commission of Berlin, 76 Connecticut, application, I think that's application, 199. The findings in this appellate court case, which is binding, were as follows. The commission relied in part on, I don't know what that symbol was, D3 of the regulations as a basis for denying the site plan application, applications. That regulation listed under this entitled Environmental and Related Regulations provides noise. Any noise emitted outside the property from which it originates shall comply with the provisions of Sections 22A 69-1 to 22A 69-7.4 of the Regulations of the Connecticut Department of Environmental Protection, Control of Noise. The court concluded that this regulation was ineffective because it conflicted with state statutes governing noise pollution control. We agree. The legislator has provided an unambiguous language that no ordinance that, um, I don't know what that says. Ordinance shall be effective until, no ordinance shall be effective until such ordinance has been approved by the commissioner. General State Statutes 22A 73C, dash 73C, the commission concedes that it did not obtain such approval. It acknowledges 22A dash 67, but posit that, my eyesight is so bad right now. I need my glasses. That General Statutes 8-2 empower the commission to adopt D3 of the regulations. Specifically, the commission argues the type of regulation provides for Chapter 442 of the General Statutes titled Noise Pollution, Pollution Control by Ordinance is entirely different from the Land Use Regulation adopted by Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission. Indeed, D3 of the zoning regulations applies only to site plan review while an ordinance adopted pursuant to Chapter 442 would regulate noise emissions in all situations and not merely when a site plan is under review. We reject the commission's argument for several reasons. Most importantly, we read Chapter 442, 22A-67, as a comprehensive scheme for state and local efforts aimed at controlling noise pollution. Second, 8-2, which grants local zoning commissions the authority to promulgate, promulgate regulations, does not govern noise pollution laws. In fact, 8-2, which sets forth in nearly exhaustive detail the types of regulations that local zoning commissions may promulgate, does not even mention noise or noise pollution. Although 8-2A does provide that regulations shall be designed to promote health and the general welfare. We do not read that language in the enabling statute to necessarily confer authority in the zoning commission to promulgate regulations concerning noise pollution. And moreover, we certainly do not read that language to contradict the legislator's specific enactment in 22A-67 and construing statutes. We are mindful that specific terms covering the given subject will prevail over other general language of the same or another statute which might otherwise prove controlling. This was from Southern New England Telephone Company versus the Department of Public Utility Control. This case established that zoning regulations may not regulate noise as it is not authorized under the zoning enabling statute and the statutes pertaining to noise control require the regulatory mechanism to be by ordinance. As such, the Section 6B noise regulations are being removed from the zoning regulations as they invalid, they invalidated, are invalidated by the court case. The PCC would like the Board of Selectmen to consider adopting an ordinance as allowed under the provisions of Connecticut General Statute, Chapter 442. I am attaching the current zoning regulation for the Board of Selectmen as a starting conversation on this matter. I would advise that if the Board of Selectmen wishes to pursue the ordinance, that the town attorney should re, review the existing zoning regulation for compliance with the statute and verify the other mandatory requirements such as equipment, calibration, and training for any official who would be charged with this enforcement. Thank you for listening. Um, there is, um, I have, I have some documents if, if anyone wishes, but it does, um, show what decibels should be at certain days of the, certain times of the days for industrial business and residential agriculture.
I assume this is something we would have law enforcement regulate currently?
Well, okay, it's, it's, you mean this?
I mean, uh, when like, um, Robin talks about, um, that you have to train someone on what the calibration's on.
Well, no.
If it's gonna be, if it's gonna be, if it's gonna be something that's, um, enforced by the zoning board, then it would have to be one of the members of the zoning board enforcing it.
They're saying it can't.
It would have to be.
It can't, it has to be done by, the Board of Selectmen has to make a regulation.
It would have to be an employee who would do it.
Um, well, it would still be police, like disturbance, right?
No.
That, that's what I was gonna be going with. There's, there's, just thinking offhand, I can come up with three different statutes that specifically, um, would have noise as a component of them. Um, breach peace, disorderly conduct, and creating a public disturbance. Uh, two misdemeanors and an infraction. If someone calls into the police department and says, there's a party at Joe's house. It's loud as hell. It's 1 o'clock in the morning. I gotta go to work. Cops show up. Depending on what occurs after that is what level of, you know, enforcement action is gonna be, you know. I don't know. I was a kid. I went to parties. We got thrown up because we were too loud. And if you went back, you knew you were gonna, well, they were gonna tell your parents and that was worse than any law they could throw at you. Um, but for, for something along those lines, usually it's a, hey, break it up. There's, you know, you guys are here. As soon as they know about it, they go, they break it up and no more is done with it. If it's, if it reoccurs, now we start talking about next levels of, of enforcement, either infraction or misdemeanor summons or uh, in, in some extreme cases, it would be a criminal arrest and, in, uh, in processing with a court date. Um, so it's, there's, there's where the noises come into play for, um, a, a complaint of noise from. Now, if, if it's, um, if it's a, if it's a factory, you would have to have, this is where it would, I wouldn't, I don't know these statutes intimately like I do the criminal ones. But you would have to have someone who is trained specifically in the use of a decimeter. On top of, um, the, on top of taking them away from, would they be doing this as, not as a complaint-driven, but just as a maintenance thing? Or would, would it have to be complaint-driven?
Well, I look at it like, excuse me.
Go ahead. No, no, I, I just, it's, I, I, I don't understand why we're going through another regulation in town that may or may not have an expenditure of funding, i.e., um, you know, decimeters and training and, and all that when we have at least three criminal statutes on the book, as well as what I'm reading here about, there's also state statutes in play about how this is regulated already.
Yeah, I mean, I think many towns have enforced it through planning and zoning, which is not the correct way to do it. And I think it's kind of setting the tone for your expectations in the town and behavior, right? So I, I think that's why they just want to transfer it to an ordinance so that we're doing everything by the book, um, still within the intent of like, what, like, when people come in and they do our plan for conservation and development and what they want for our town, um, you know, they don't, they want a peaceful town. So I think when you put that in writing, you're kind of setting the standard for.
It sounds good. So I was talking to Robin about it and just other towns. It's almost like, um, I liken it to a blight ordinance where it's been discussed before here. And the problem, and the reason we don't have one is because it does have to be in, it's, it has to be enforceable and we don't have, first of all, the staffing. There's towns around us who have blight ordinances. So to your point, to your, to answer your question, um, it's not complaint-driven because blight officers drive around paid on overtime before their shift starts to look for everyone's, um, blight and then reports everyone, which I don't think it's fair for our small town to do that. We try to deal with each incident just.
Much more difficult to regulate than a town with streets and sidewalks and a gritted town. Like, that's a totally different scenario than like our town.
Would it be complaint-driven? In other words, I wouldn't expect somebody to patrol a town with a decimeter.
Right.
So.
But if somebody complains.
Absolutely.
So, right. So then we need staff who can work on nights and weekends. Our current building official can't and our town planner is here two mornings a week. So we would need to hire staff who can work on nights and weekends. Um, it's just, you know, just talking. This is all new to me, so I was like just talking with Robin about it. And the equipment and being trained on the equipment. So, and then I talked to, um, our resident trooper about it too. So he, it's not their job to, um, well, right. It's the reason, the, like, um, Steve was saying, if someone was being disorderly, then they go to their statute and say, this is what rules you're breaking. But if someone has, like Galasso is a perfect example. So they're really loud at 12:05 during the day, but they have a permit for the business that they're doing. So as long as. Galasso. Yeah, so I mean, they last at 12:05, uh, many weekdays. And that's not a noise disturbance because it, it might be, but it's not because they have a permit for the functionality of their business. So, so if he, if he went to someone and he could go to them and if they're making, you know, if it's.
know, if it's a big party or something, he could break it up, and then, or if they refuse, it becomes a, something else, disturbance, I don't know.
Yeah, a breach of peace.
Breach of peace, that's the one. So, I guess I see it kind of like, I don't know if the costs outweigh the actual, like, we don't, so, and then, excuse me, one more second, so, the police department has not received one noise complaint, and he went back six months, but he, he texted all the guys today, and he asked, have we, have you ever received a noise complaint?
It's because we've had a regulation.
No, the regulation, this isn't enforceable, though, because it was an ordinance. Right.
It still was there as a deterrent, whether it was enforceable or you.
But no one's called the police department because of a noise complaint.
In the last six months.
And, yeah, in the last six months.
I mean, I guess what I see it as is kind of like for the dump, the right, the rule was that you only can do one load a day, but people were abusing that and going in many times a day, and the Department of Public Works had said, like, we need an ordinance with rules about it because it's hard for my guys to enforce that.
Right.
And even though that's really what it should be, it's hard for them to, like, stop that from happening, and so I kind of see, like, noise control ordinance is kind of the same vein of that, it's like, yes, you should be able to control it with police, but it kind of backs that up, do you know what I mean? Like, I guess that's how I see it, so it's the town saying, like, this is our standard and what we want, and it helps kind of enforce what the police are doing, similar, I guess I see it similar to DPW, because really, we should have been able to say with the trash, like, no, one load is one load, but we changed it because that ordinance needed to be in place for them to feel like they could really regulate.
Well, it's like the park rules, too.
Yeah.
There's a sign, but, yeah.
Yeah, so I guess that's, that's where I come from on it.
Do you, have you experienced the noise from the center of Granby? From the brewery or from the?
Ford Adams? Is that what's there?
Ford Hills, I don't know, there's a difference.
I didn't know if they were there.
It's like a different name, though, right?
As a matter of fact.
But I think they have a permit, and it's during work hours.
The band shell, you know.
Yeah, but they have permits for that, and it's during, it's not past a certain time, like, they have to stop at a certain time.
Yeah, when I was living on Turkey Hills Road, I had numerous occasions where I enjoyed listening to the band from, at Ben Ford Adams out of my back deck. So, yeah.
Not everybody enjoys it.
No, no, I understand, yeah, exactly.
It's a good band, right?
Right, exactly, yeah, yeah. Depends on the type of music and things like that, so.
Yeah, what you gotta do the next.
Gotta be in my wheelhouse right now.
But that's what this is, this is just a question to kind of.
There's, this has got to, I think, what, there's 169 towns in the state, there must, this, we're not the first ones with it.
Oh, sure.
And there's got to be a successful way, without a great expense, of controlling this.
Yeah, and I, and I would think that your, the public safety department would be the primary responder for it, because I know that in the course of my career, I answered, especially when I worked out of the Canaan Bear, because it was a small rural place, and houses were far apart, so if someone was disturbed by a party, it was a wild party, and I've broken up, I probably can't, I think I'd have to take my shoes off to count that high, of parties that were, were large and had to be toned down, dispersed, disbanded.
That's, that's.
It is.
It's more about having a business or some ongoing whatever.
But those are permits that are, they file and are given, do you know what I mean? But if they go past the certain.
If we have to have some sort of a rule.
We do. We do, so if it goes after that time, if they're, if the permit they have goes after that time, that's when the police came up.
But what are the towns' guidelines?
I have to look exactly what they are.
Well, the guidelines would be outlined specifically in a permit. If you apply for a permit, you're saying that you're going to do X, Y, and Z between these hours and these hours, and then it's, it would be approved by the town.
Ordinance.
Well, if you have, but if the permit is in play, and they are violating the permit, then the permit would be pulled, and it would be reviewed.
It's different than violating a regulation that you can't enforce, I think.
That would seem like very cumbersome for everybody, every time somebody wants to do something, they have to submit a request for a permit, as opposed to just having it across the board, this is the rule.
Well, you can still do a permit beyond that, but this is.
Yeah, for, for, for things that are over the top, you would be, like, if you were gonna have a band at the band shell, you would need to have a permit for it, if you, you know, if we were to do something like that at East Granby Farms, you know, and somebody wanted to come in and have a family party with a band, then they would probably, you know, it would be a good idea to have a permit in place for something like that.
So I should know this, but is the bottom half, is this what she is suggesting for language, or is this what's currently in planning?
This is what.
This is the regulation.
This is the current planning and zoning regulation? I mean, it looks similar, but I don't know if she's using that as suggestion.
Yeah, noise regulation.
Taking it off of one and kind of putting it into an ordinance as the same thing, like, is that what she's trying to say? I think it's, is it continuing?
This is the current zoning regulation. I'm attaching the current zoning regulation for the board. I would advise that if the board wishes to pursue the ordinance, that the town attorney review the existing zoning regulations, so this must be the regulation right here.
I mean, I think it's worth the venture of at least having the attorney look at it and proposing something to us, so we can think of it further.
Usually gives an opinion or a memo, which gives the pros and cons.
Yeah, he can just re, and rewrite if he has suggested language based on what other towns do.
Right. All right, thank you for that and for your input, appreciate it. All right, last on the agenda, or 6H, is the 250th celebration, America's birthday coming up, and so at last, the last meeting, we talked about forming committees. I guess if you're here, that means you want to form a committee, or a committee, chair committee?
I did talk to.
Yes, I was gonna say that. So, thank you. I think that night Amanda emailed the high school principal, and you can talk about it if you want to, and Morgan, the curator at the Newgate Prison Museum, and they're both interested here, if you want to read what they wrote. So Morgan, she's in the process of preparing for America 250th at the museum, and would love to help spearhead a town initiative, especially with student involvement, we love that about her, so, to help spearhead. And then Tony Demello, our principal, said he's going to figure out a way to involve the students, and he's going to meet with the director of curriculum, where perhaps it would be a great capstone project for, for seniors, and, or at the end of the junior year, for seniors who needed to graduate. And so he just asked for a couple weeks, and he'll come back to us with some ideas, which I thought was great.
So we just asked them to do it sooner rather than later, because even though they start capstones, usually someone started in the spring, there is grant money that we can apply for, and that's due like the beginning of May, so really, if they want to come up with an idea, they need to be coming up with it in the next.
This is a celebration.
Four, five months.
America's 250th birthday, yeah. So, all the town, 2026.
Yeah.
So we're starting early, there's an initiative from the state to get every town.
Society involved in that.
Yeah, so.
I think I copied the historical society on it, too.
Yeah, they're doing something, and, yeah, so, we're gonna look at economic development and all the committees.
If that's a national thing, not just a town thing.
It is, it's a, it's a national, so someone from the state is reaching out to every town and saying, what are you doing? They want to know, like, our progress, they want to make sure every town is doing something.
It seems like there'd be a lot of duplication where you might be able to be more efficient having.
With the surrounding town.
Or two towns, or whatever, so having conversations with other surrounding towns.
That's a great idea, Farmington Valley, or just.
Whatever, yeah.
Our neighboring towns.
Yeah, there are very specific rules to apply for the grant money and like, what they would like to see towns implement, so.
If you'd like to be a part of the committee.
I don't know, I'll be along.
It sounds like you're interested. Just have you sign this form.
Witness to a lot of it.
No, I mean, you know, it's like, it's really the planning leading up to, right? And it's just better to start planning now, when you have a year and a half, you know, and just stay ahead of it.
To me, just the, you know, economies of scale, too, working with other towns, trying to come up with a, you know, like, it wouldn't make sense for Granby and East Granby both to have a duck race on the same day.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we definitely, I, we, I'm part, East Granby's part of the Bradley Development League, which is East Granby, Sawfields, Windsor Locks, and Windsor, so we will start talking about it to make sure we don't duplicate, and then we're also part of the Farmington Valley Collaborative with all of the Farmington Valley towns, so we meet quarterly with both. So I'll definitely have a conversation with all of them, yeah, it's a great point.
But you can't be hiking the Appalachian Trail every month in the next year and a half.
I'm done with that.
Well, let us know if you're interested. You can co-spearhead. Okay, so next on the agenda is public comment. There's nobody online that I see.
What was the bottom line of the noise?
Just a discussion, so we'll go back to.
What's next?
So we'll go back to the town attorney for his, his feedback and commentary, and then the board, the planning and zoning board will.
Is he the person who has the most exposure to what other towns have done in the state?
Yeah, yep, he actually was a first selectman for another town, so he, you know, understands that, and does, is, represents a couple towns, so he does, he, he's seen it, so, yeah, I think he'll be able to give good feedback, I have no idea what his opinion is.
So is it safe to assume that you're in favor of having something going?
Well, after talking, honestly, after talking to Kyle, our resident trooper, he's, because we have, I'm, I have an open mind, so I'll listen.
Be having difficulty with enforcing the wishes of the town.
Yeah, but he can make an arrest where others can't.
I understand that, no, but, but, you know.
Right.
You brought up training and equipment and all kinds of things.
So he won't do that.
Block, do it, Matt.
Right, because they don't have police powers, but he can go, and we have coverage and midnights, too, and we're already paying for it, so it's just, it's hard for a small town to do that kind of stuff, that's my only point, whether, yeah, I mean, I, I know that.
I don't know, if, if somebody's out there raising hell or making noise on a regular basis, or whatever the situation is, if somebody, you know, presents them with the town, this is our town ordinance, it does not appear that you're within the boundaries of this, please stop. I think most people will stop, I don't think most people are gonna push it.
It's just having the staffing for that, and that's most likely going to be at night or on a weekend, that's the problem.
My question is.
It could be a letter the next day, it doesn't have to be that night, you know, we received this complaint or some complaint.
Someone has to be there with the decibel reader.
No, no, I'm saying, I'm saying with that.
Oh, as a preemptive, as a preemptive measure.
Like, if somebody, that way, if somebody, like, emailed, like, the first selectwoman and had a complaint or whatever, and, you know, we could send a letter from the town.
And then you just sent them, you know, a copy of what the ordinance is, please ensure that you're within this, you know? And then once, you know, once in a while, maybe twice a year, you're gonna have somebody push it, you know, and you have to have somebody.
Yep.
Maybe you can contract with somebody to go and measure it for that, two times a year or whatever.
Yeah, you know, the proverbial low frequency, high impact, quality of life issue because someone's making noise regularly, and if you could find a way to nip it in the bud before there was police involvement, is that what you're kind of pushing towards?
Having, having the regulation there, but not necessarily having some official enforce it, just having them presented with, this is the rule.
Right, so if somebody's hacking around and you want, if we say, hey, look, listen, we sent you this letter to make you aware of the, of the rules.
Right.
And now the police are here, and, you know, and we know that you were sent this, now it, it kind of skips one step of the interaction. Hey, you've been, you've been warned already to consider this your last warning, is, is that what you're, you're alluding to?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I get you on that one, yeah.
Not having the, the first contact.
Have to be police related.
Or proof from decibel levels or anything else, just, we're having complaints.
A little preventive maintenance, for lack of a better term.
Or if the complaint comes to the town hall, or system police.
And yes, the police would be notified, the people would be, everybody would be notified, but nothing's really happening, maybe, yeah.
I'm just wondering if, I'm just wondering if because we have, so it's like, it's like speeding, speeding, we don't have a regulation or ordinance for speeding, it's a, it's a law, so we can only catch the speeders if we're enforcing it, so we can't pull anyone over if we don't have an officer on duty, or they're not in the right area, so that's the only concern I have with an ordinance, because it's not enforceable if you're not there, do you know what I'm saying? It's, like the, like the, like the park, I mean, you can't, if somebody wants loud noise to stop immediately, it's not gonna happen, is my point, you know? If it was a party, then the police can come, I see both sides. Well, I think, there's pros and cons.
You have the attorney look into it.
Right.
See what other towns do.
Like, is there a problem having an ordinance that you can't really enforce, because the, the police aren't gonna have a decibel reader, I don't know if you need a decibel reader, if, my understanding from Robin is you need a decibel reader.
That's only if the decibels are a part of the ordinance, so I think that's why Scott needs to look into what other towns do, because they may not even have, like, numbers related to it.
Okay.
And maybe nobody does an ordinance, maybe a lot of them do, so I think that's what's kind of interesting.
A little recon.
Right, yeah.
Find out what's out there, what's available.
Yeah, maybe numbers aren't, aren't the way to say it, maybe there's a different way, I don't, I guess I haven't looked myself, so I don't.
Yeah, can you edit the ordinance?
Yeah, like, see what other people do, and then, you know, he'll probably find one that makes the most sense.
And breach of peace is, it's, there's no decibels involved, it's a, it's a snap, it's a judgment by the officer that's in play, that, you know, a reasonable and prudent person, a standard for that specific incident. 1480H is a loud exhaust on a vehicle, if it's not factory equipped, if it's something different, if you've modified it and it goes above a certain decibel level, you will get a ticket for it and be fined for it. A trooper on the street that hears a loud cargo by cannot take action on that, the only thing they can do is provide a written warning with inspection required, and the DMV would have the decibel, the decibel reader at the inspection stations. So it's, you know, initial action is taken, someone complains, but it has, it has to have another step before it can be actually enforced because of the way the laws are written. So I, it's, with all of the state statutes that are in play regarding noise, I, I do, I hear everybody's point about it, but from, from the law enforcement side of it, it seems redundant, but if, I see your case, too, where if you want to get something out to someone to prevent them from having a law enforcement interaction, just give them a reminder that, hey, look, listen, there's regular folk that have to go to work tomorrow, and you're doing, you're running your sawmill for your business at, you know, 11 o'clock at night, try to take the party part out of it, because you know you're gonna get calls on that eventually, or from time to time. But somebody who's done something that is a side hustle for them, where they're, they're sawing off new law, new boyd out because they got a sawmill going, but they're running it too late at night, that would be something that would be, would be better served by an ordinance as opposed to a direct law enforcement interaction, right? I just want to make sure I'm understanding what you guys are saying, so that we can proceed in the right direction. Fair, fair assessment?
Yeah, I mean.
Okay.
Planning and zoning can watch this meeting, too, and listen to the discussion, so they have a, know where we're at.
They're all coming from.
Yeah. Okay, so any other public comment? All right, I just need a motion to adjourn.
I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned at 7:39 PM.